...by their process of trying to get a specific compliance from the Conservation Commission. They're well on their way, they have engaged the Conservation Commission, the commission has responded, and they simply need to get the work done. So, we have a letter from David Archibald, who is a subcontractor from Network Building Consulting LLC, site acquisitions, who is the proponent and the applicant for Sprint. Per the email from the Conservation Commission, it would appear that they do not want us, they no longer willing to allow us to move forward until the site work is done. That being said, it will take some time for Sprint to get the contractor approved and scheduled to do the fieldwork at the site. I formally request that you continue the hearing scheduled for tonight to sometime in October. If possible, please do not schedule it for the 15th or the 17th, as I would be out of town. Certainly if that is the only time it works, I will have someone cover for me. Thank you, David Archibald. I've seen a motion to continue that to a date in October.
First one, Senator?
When's our next meeting?
He, I believe he did say mid-October first, because I, I'm not even sure, he'll be ready by mid-October, but he's hopeful that at least by mid-October, because they have to, they have to go out and hire these people that will do the site work and the technical work.
Well, how about the 24th then?
24th sounds pretty good.
Okay, I have a motion to continue this Sprint hearing to the 24th at 7:30.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Dave Jacob, always in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next order of business is John Matthews, is it RDM?
RMD.
RMD, I transpose the letters.
That's all right.
RMD, who represents Market Baskets and the company, as a background, which I don't think we need to go through that at great length, Market Basket replaced their septic system and in the process, Reserve Area basically took out a wooded buffer for the Butters and Cedarwood Lane. Mr. Matthews has, is going to make a presentation tonight as to what kind of mitigation measures and what kinds of measures that the company might take to restore the area to somewhat what it was before. So I'd like to open up the floor to John Matthews.
I can post something up on there. Great, great. After I met with everyone last winter, we retained Steve Harrison, who lives here in Rowley and runs a landscape architect business from Newburyport, and does a really nice job, and he's done it, done work for us before.
Copy for them.
Yep. I'll just turn around for you.
Dick, does anybody need one there? You just want to look at that one, or you?
This is fine.
You can take that one, too.
You might as well have one.
Can you see that one okay?
Yeah.
Do you focus on see that?
Steve met with the neighbors.
Do you have a approximate date for that, though?
On the meeting?
Yeah, just kind of, or a month or whatever.
May, I think. Met with them on site, and I came by myself. And Steve subsequently, after hearing the issues, came up with a complete analysis and a solution that we'll discuss this evening, but this photograph, he has marked heights of a proposed buffer fence that, I've got a few of these.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. And what Steve did is, from the backyards, took this photo and determined that if a screen was built to nine feet, that would completely cover the building and the HVAC units, so it would be complete coverage from the yards. And so, we're working on two, when we get to the plan, we're working on two bases here. One is to create this screen buffer, which is vertical woodposts and horizontal boards to a height of nine feet to be placed at the top of the buffer, of the existing berm that we put in last year. And it's, that's what's depicted in the photograph, but we would come along behind the pine trees that we planted at nine feet, and that would also have supports behind it, because it's quite a, quite a structure, so we would have vertical posts in with supports. And then we would plant additional around the leach field here, and, yeah, the fence goes between the pines, additional planting here. And what's intended, and I think Steve's got a good, good sense for this, is when the pine trees grow, and they grow over a foot a year, the necessity of the fence will eventually go away. So the idea is put the fence up, let the trees grow, eventually the fence will deteriorate, it will take it away, and we'll be back to the condition we were in prior to the new septic system and berm being built. And I'm in the process of getting, pardon me?
Can I just, I just want John to finish his presentation.
Right, no.
Okay, that way we keep the continuity.
I agree.
And we're in the, we're in the process of getting pricing on, on this mitigation, and we'll go forward in the near future.
Do I see in this plan some additional planting?
Along the front, exactly. This is, this is the back of the driveway, here, that's from here. This is the back of the, the delivery area of the center, and Steve has recommended planting extensively here in front of the leach field.
And the buildings on the other side of the driveway is?
Buildings down here.
Oh, down there, okay.
Right. The homes are here.
Oh, oh, okay. I guess the next, thanks, the next question, is there a timeline for this?
We're getting pricing on it right now, and we plan to build it this fall.
Okay, so before the year end?
Hopefully, yeah.
I may ask a question?
Sure, can you stop, please, just kind of the rules here, I just need your name and address.
Cedarwood Lane, 16 Cedarwood Lane. How thick is the fence?
How thick is the fence? It's a board, it's a board on a post, and it's nine feet high.
It's like a fence that you put between you and your neighbor, only it's horizontal and board.
Right, right, okay. There would be some, some gaps between the boards, because we've got to let the air through so that it doesn't get, act like a huge sail, but Steve says, you know, about an inch between the boards, but that'll give you good, good coverage. And again, the trees will grow like everywhere else along that berm eventually.
Does it have some sound, sound buffer, sound?
The board fence will have some capability.
Tampering capabilities?
Yeah, it will.
What kind of boards?
Could be pine, or, you know.
Whether it's a cage?
Stained, probably.
Pressure-treated.
Stained, dark color, pressure-treated on the posts.
The fence ought to be pressure-treated, so the boards, pine will break down in a long time.
Well, if it's stained, it won't, but.
By the time you're probably stained and stain it and do all that, and you're pressure-treated, it'll be done with it.
It has two issues. One is white pine, make it bigger, the bottoms of them clean out.
Eventually.
Eventually. So, at least I would think you would want to keep the board fence, not think of it as a temporary thing, because it won't be when these things creep up, keep the board fence there.
Same.
There may be some boarding that may be more permanent than white pine boards that carpenter ants really might love, if you want to get them. And I don't know, Steve's not here, but I'm not a big fan of the white pine, that's a personal childhood problem of climbing them and getting pitch all over my hands and that sort of thing, but I think the board fence is one of the best answers to, to issues, sound and privacy. And keeping that one inch in there would be good, and clean and crisp right down through there.
It's a profile here on the plan, too, because he's contorted to the, to the berm.
No, I think having a fence, I mean, from litter, from some of the other problems, it's going to help.
Dick Cowan, 16 Cedarwood Lane, how thick will the boards be, John?
They'll probably be a three-quarter inch board.
Okay.
Or one-inch dimensional board.
Okay, is there any chance of getting them thicker?
I have to talk to the fence company, but if that's an issue, just take some notes.
Well, talk to, talk to the fence company, there may be another product that looks like a board, so it lasts longer.
It'll last longer, right.
Because I'm feeling similar eight years from now, that pine board.
I agree with what you're saying with the carpenter ants, because whether you like it or not, they are out there.
Especially in a white pine forest.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Cliff Widge, 12 Cedarwood Lane, my thought of this is, we also want a sound barrier. That's the whole deal, too, about the fence, and the thicker, and the fence should be there for the duration that Market Basket's there.
As well help the sound.
It should be maintained throughout. It's completely, you know, it needs to have sound barrier there, and it should be at least a two-inch thickness PT on both posts and rails for that to last.
There may be a cedar board.
Or a cedar.
A light cedar board might work, because I don't think carpenter ants like the cedar, and it will last.
No, they're not crazy about white cedar.
But.
But even if it's a thick, rough material, that's fine, it doesn't have to be stained.
Wood is much better than the idea of a concrete block thing out there, block, it just, I think that's.
It's going to look better, I think the height is good, I think nine feet is good, when you look at the, I mean, from stability.
If we're still around and there's a problem with the white pines moving up.
If you look at what we planted years ago.
They would be looking for, Market Basket will be looking for something at some point in time.
Is there a possibility, oh, sorry, I don't want to, any more comments, go ahead.
Some of the trees that have already been planted, John, have died.
Okay.
The ones that are down towards my end, there's three or four of them that have died due to the drought, whatever.
Okay.
Most of the other ones are okay, and they did grow somewhat, but it's just down towards my end.
These ones are planted recently?
Those are the ones that they planted.
Last year.
When they did the whole planting.
Didn't make it through the summer.
I think two of them didn't make it through the initial planting.
Those are tough, yeah.
It's a tough summer.
Could we write a, write into the spec or four of us doing this, that somebody is going to water these trees for them?
They did have somebody.
Well, they did have somebody.
They did have watering.
Well, they do it this year?
Yeah, I mean, it's Pennywise Palmfulish to do six-foot trees and not water them, because you waste your money.
Right.
But we lost two lot of those, that's not bad.
First year, you got to get them established, and, is there any way of not having a monoculture in the front of the septic system?
I'm sorry?
A monoculture of just white pine, or do you want?
We, um.
And what have you used, you have many, many?
We have, we have white pine and forsythia alone, it's the old berm, the piece that got cut out of there. We can look at it, again, I brought you what Steve has recommended, and I can talk to him, and.
It's a good screening tree.
It is.
Yeah, that's a good, I think that's a good, they grow well around there.
They grow fast.
It's a good question.
We can add something else in.
Well, you have so many centers, you might see in your centers, well, what works well in the Hampshire and so forth. I appreciate, I appreciate the training in front, I mean, that's good.
The forsythias stay low, and that kind of works well, so we can, we can do that.
And they're tough.
Pretty each week of the year.
All right, I think, you know, so, go ahead.
Is there any possibility of getting trees taller than six feet?
I can talk to Steve, but that, you could get a risk on that of, they're just too big to transplant reasonably, I think you have some problems.
You lose more of them.
Even if you went to something, say, like, eight feet, it's only two feet more, I know.
You know, there's variability, if you see a few that are decent, that are taller, I think that's a good, that's a good idea. I mean, I think this is definitely going to afford a better situation, once they're there now, and I, you know, and I think the fact the company's willing to put some money into this and implement it is a good thing, and it also goes the whole length, you know, and it kind of ties into existing vegetation, so, right, is that the idea?
Exactly right, to tie it in. And then we did post no trespassing signs last, I think it was in June, because it was a matter of dirt bikes or wheelers.
ATBs, yes.
So we posted them where the, where the openings were in the woods, front, and does that help?
There was a, there was an invasion around seven o'clock this evening.
Really?
All you need to do, John, I'm not going to tell you where they originate, all you need to do is just follow the tracks.
Yeah, I understand.
But actually, that was the first we had seen, that I had heard for a while, so it was kind of odd that it would be tonight that we heard them out there instead.
Wow, okay.
It'll dissipate.
Well, it is posted.
Yeah, that's right, it is.
No trespassing.
But they're kids. They're kids.
So, would you, now that we have, we have a town planner, would you like to report back to Katrina Olini as to?
Sure, we spoke to the fellow, John Matthews.
Nice to meet you.
As to what the status is, and if you can implement some of the comments and ideas. I think having a thicker definitely is better sound mitigation.
Okay.
And permit versus something in rotten way.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
In order to bring it back to the sound barrier that we had before, I think it needs to be a permanent.
Okay, we'll talk to the fence company next.
This may be better than what you had before. I think the original fence before, right?
No, but there are a lot of trees. There's a forest.
We had a forest in the beginning.
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Chairman, is it the boards wish that, that he just move forward and construction begin with the suggestions made tonight, or do you want to see?
Just report back, if there's any modifications to the plan, or if you just want to write up a letter with specs and integrate some of the ideas and a timeline?
Sure.
Just so that there's some expectation, as some people know.
We'll do that. And I can let the neighbors know.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, thanks.
And we'd like to have that be permanent.
Understood. Yep.
I've been around for a long time.
I mean, we've got the matter of all the debris and papers in our backyards, without that fence there, you know, we're picking up our stuff in our backyard from the Market Basket, too, so that'll help.
Just a quick one, did they take out one of the signs, there's, there's those opposing signs, once at seven o'clock, once at 7:30?
They're both there.
Pass the one delivery.
They're both there.
Is it supposed to be, what is the name?
Mr. Chairman, if I may present this.
Sure.
That's pictures of that, that's for the board, this is for you, John. The original one is the one with the one-way here.
Can we just, just so it's posted?
It should read 7:30.
Can we just take out the seven?
It's over on the other side, they don't match.
I know that they're there early, and they sit around.
We have, we have a real problem with the, with the 7:30.
Is that something you want, I mean?
But that was the original agreement way back in the beginning.
But it's a, it's a, I mean, I can, if it's a business problem, I mean, he's being honest with you.
Well, I understand.
Why can't they wait out front, instead of the reefers in the backyard waking us up at four o'clock?
There aren't any reefers back there, four o'clock, I'm sorry.
Well, let's not, I don't want to, I, the question is, if they're not, if they actually come in at seven, okay, and aren't idling there from six, whatever, I mean, I've gone in there early, I've seen the trucks there, but that's neither here nor there, I mean, that's something, I mean, what are we going to do, you know, police trucks, if you're in the business, people have to do their deliveries. Is that something that it can be understood, so we can have it just, the signage to reflect the reality? I mean, I think if DeMullis is, if Market Basket is willing to put in the money to do this, you know, if the reality is seven, between seven and 7:30, the important thing is you don't want them in there idling in the early hours of the morning, is that an agreement? You know, is that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Dick Cowan, Cedarwood Lane, I've written, I've monitored this back further than this, but I monitored the times, and this report goes back to 7/17, July 17. They were there as early as 6:15 a.m. on that day, on 7/19, they were at 5:15 a.m. Some of those trucks that's on that report are actually the Market Basket trucks, and they're there before seven o'clock.
I think towns, I've seen towns where it's seven, what I would like is to recognize Ms. Matthews being honest, that if it's posted at seven, take away the 7:30, leave it at seven, and make the best effort, you know, to have them either idle, you know, by the detention basin or someplace elsewhere, so they're not idling with fumes and sound, like you said, at five o'clock. And I know they're there earlier, I've actually, I have gone by myself, but that's, I want to go forward, and, and two signs is ridiculous.
And I'll take this to our operations tomorrow, because this is not supposed to be the case.
But, I, I, yeah, I mean, I would stop there, bringing my daughter to work and coming back, like, right after seven, and sometimes quarter seven, and I've seen numerous, and I would take a drive-through, and there were plenty of trucks there.
Wouldn't affect anybody, too.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the times that the trucks were there were even prior to, before that.
Sometimes it's four o'clock.
Yeah, but I'd like to make the best effort to put the signage at seven.
15.
Because that's what.
While we split it?
The reality is, if they're there at four, I mean, we should compromise at seven. So we should put seven, that was initial, I mean, that signage is up, is that it, am I making sense?
Yeah.
And just really make the best effort, you know, and, and Mr. Matthews is, John's going to bring that to operations, and he's taking, I'm glad you took the, you know, the data.
Right, it just makes the fence more thicker, then.
Yeah, and we'll just try to, you know, try to monitor and keep, do the best we can, I think we've made progress.
Yes, the only comment that I would like to make is, I am in that industry, transportation, and, you know, most times we have trucks delivering at 8:30 in the morning to commercial built, built businesses, up to and including warehouses. I'm not looking for 8:30, it was 7:30, and I'm a former negotiator of contracts, I'd like to split it somewhere between seven and 7:30, make it 7:15.
Well, let's, I get some feedback from John about, you know, from what's happening here, and see if we get.
Yeah, because there, I mean.
I just want the signage to say, it's kind of ridiculous to say both, say one way or the other.
John, what's the enforcement?
Our receivers have instructions, and trucks aren't supposed to be back there before seven, and if they're back there, they're not supposed to be, so.
Yeah, in a rural town, that's not unusual.
What's the enforcement, then?
What's the enforcement?
Tell them not to.
Well, slap their hands, or tell them not to be there, or what prevents them, is there anything that really prevents them from?
Doing it over again.
Yeah, doing it over.
I don't know, all I can do is the best is to try and enforce it, and.
And just recognize, I mean, and they're, they're being a nuisance to the Butters in a rural town, and, and in terms of the company, being a good neighbor, that's all. I mean, I think.
They can idle in the front of the building, right, there's no reason why they can't do that, it won't bother anyone.
Giant parking lot.
We've got the same situation in Newburyport, and it's enforced, and when the signs are up there, and we think we've got that one under control, and we're trying better, trying harder here.
And that's all we can ask.
That's fine, that's fine.
Are any other comments, because we want to go into it.
No, sir.
We'd just like to get this thing to fall.
Just like to get it moving along, get it started, get it finished, like to see it before the leaves start to fall.
It's great to see a concrete plan, and hopefully implement some of the input, we have a planner in place, and we got that, everybody's here, communication's going to stay open, so feel free.
Do you have a business card on you, too?
I don't, but.
Was, was that fax number today also your phone number?
Yeah, well, that's my fax, I got that here.
Is it also your phone number?
I'll give you my, my mobile.
That'd be much easier than sending out a letter every time, invite you with me.
Oh, I agree.
All right, thank you.
Terrific, and I'll leave this with the board, I'll leave that with the neighbors and all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you going to speak about the other building?
Probably.
Are you going to speak about the new building?
We haven't heard a thing about a new building.
What am I going to speak about?
Nothing.
No theoreticals.
Okay. We will be in. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care. I really appreciate you guys coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay in, stay in.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Stay in your top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want an update on Jels?
You can go. I was going to say something with the cameras, if I could.
Scott Silver, Jels group emailed late this afternoon and said he will not be here tonight, he has not reported the special permit, and he hasn't finished the punch list of items given to him, so.
Okay.
Not sure when you want to table it, too, or, nothing has to be tabled, I guess, he just doesn't give off a busy permit until those things are done.
And I just want to ask our planner to inform the building inspector of that, please, as we spoke on the phone. We also, we have a letter next, C, on number three, we have a letter to sign to continuation the surety, continue the surety for Hoxworth Estates, so can we sign that?
On this, there are three copies.
At the same amount as, as the existing amount?
Yeah.
And in case anyone questioned the amount, I do have the letter the board wrote, reducing it to a certain amount, and it does coincide with this.
All right, so let's just sign that.
Yeah.
I appreciate Mr. Clark, right?
I don't know if you want to start.
Yeah, I have a motion to, to extend the, is it one year?
I believe it's to May 31st, 2013.
All right, to extend the bond, the surety to May 31st, 2013.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's passed unanimously, and I think we're down to just a couple lots, cut one lot?
One, I think, one.
I, I believe he will be coming back before the winter to have it reduced down to, reduced down to an amount to possibly just cover the trees, because usually money is kept in there for a year to make sure the trees don't die.
Right.
I don't know what Larry's going to propose to keep, but he will be coming back soon.
There's a third one?
Oh, you still signed. Who's missing a pen here?
Me.
Do you need more pens? I've got, I've got my one, he's my one. When it takes, needs a pen.
Usually I have ten, no, I've got my bag here, but I really don't.
And so at some point, Kurt, you're going to have to come in and have it notarized again, as the chairman on the, the last page, that, that worked out smoothly last week? Be nice if I was a nobody.
You've got one right next to you.
Is your own signed?
Brent, Brent is on there.
Yeah.
I want to thank Brent publicly for helping us out.
Same three, is that all there is?
And the third one?
It's right here.
All right.
Now speaking.
Thank you very much.
All right, do you have the letter from Said?
Yep, under you're taking that out of your business.
This is a, this is a bookkeeping item in line with his extension, just so that, it's a, it's, so the bank will allow him to put the cash from one bank to another.
If you remember, that, that new one had a mad amount, the savings bank, he, he gave them $60,000 and $14 in cash, in addition to the $200,000 of the, the credit line that they had held on, because he was planning on.
This is a, this is a bookkeeping item in line with his extension, just so that it's a, so the bank will allow him to put the cash from one bank to another.
If you remember that new bond had a mad amount, the savings bank, he gave them sixty thousand dollars and fourteen dollars in cash in addition to the two hundred thousand dollars of the credit line that they had held on him because he was planning on reducing the sixty thousand fourteen dollars cash bond in the stoner savings bank to zero when they accepted it. And so we've signed that and now he would like this reduced to zero, according to, because he has too much.
I'm sorry, what reduces it?
Which one does he have?
He has two banks. He has two banks. So this is just.
Stolen bank conceded.
He wants to close the stonemall?
Right.
So we still have a total amount. We got the, what are the banks?
Savings bank. It's called the savings bank.
Wakefield.
Wakefield.
Who's the client on that?
I don't know.
That's exciting. All right, the next order of business, I like to go through the minutes that, and also applaud. Thank you, Katrina, for piecing these together during a time when several people were taken. We knocked out a lot in the last meeting and I think we can hopefully come close to being current in this.
Hopefully they look a little better.
By researching notes and other methodologies Katrina has brought, put these together.
Great. It'd be nice to.
What letter were we looking for?
So March fourteenth, please. Everybody have copies?
Yep.
So public hearing with Altipadia, continued site plan zero is A.
Going back in history.
People are left, I know it's tough.
There are a couple comments.
People are far away.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple comments. Want to hear them now or?
Sure.
On, under two B, the Raleigh Protective Law Commission, in that first full paragraph, there's a reference to the newly revised panel numbers. I thought maybe, oh, first of all, there's a reference to state law changes. I think it's actually federal law changes.
They are, they are in the law.
And then at the end of that same sentence, I thought that maybe, maybe instead of referring to revised panel numbers, we refer to revised flood zone maps.
Right, the numbers just refer to locations.
And on the third page, at the end of the first paragraph, not the first full paragraph, where it says Pierce believes she would need a variance but thinks the idea is great. I'd like to clarify that because I don't think the idea of a variance is necessarily great, but the idea of mixed uses.
Do you want to repeat suggested wording?
Just say, but thinks that the idea of mixed uses is great. Or.
The idea of mixed uses.
Yeah.
Says it's great.
Did I really say great?
The great is already there.
And then at the end, documents provided at the meeting and available in the ZVA office?
Oops.
I think, I think everyone has that mistake. So you're going to put the ZVA behind you.
Well, you know what it is? It's a lot of cotton paste when I do these, so.
I'm sure.
If I have a nice form set up, I use it.
I think we know why.
Why does she keep it in the ZVA?
Where is our first, is it? Is that the official name?
Does anybody else have any changes?
No.
So I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes. Were those suggested changes of March fourteenth, two thousand and twelve?
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by G. Katrina. All those in there?
Aye.
The next one's March twenty-eighth. Again, to refresh people, we had the market basket, we start out, then we had a continued public hearing with Altipadia where we closed the public hearing, continued with them to give Gorman guidance with the dog corral.
On the second full paragraph on page two, I think it's a typo, where it says John Gorman applicant presents the original site plan, question mark. Should be just a period, I imagine, right? And the, there's the same mistake about the ZVA office at the end.
How many spell Brent's name?
Um, where?
On C. Second paragraph.
Second paragraph, on one page.
B A E S L A K, on page two.
B A E S L A K.
Is that it?
It's close to me.
Okay. Well, you work on it.
And.
I'll move we approve the minutes.
Uh, I don't, did I say, on the last one, starting page three?
Yeah.
I recall, it said Bryant, second paragraph. Bryant feels they should, they should make? I was the only one that talked to Attorney guilty.
The planning board, maybe you were saying? Bryant feels they should make?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a euphemism, that's kind of a nebulous thing.
Before, I think you meant the board, right? The board should make one.
Right, right.
So I'll replace that with the board?
Instead of, we don't really deal in absolutes, so the board should make an additional attempt.
An additional attempt.
Because he was the lawyer of record at the time.
I would like to bring that up with the board, that issue later, if you would like, if you have the time.
We'll see.
Okay.
All right. Just spotted something under new applications. It's S A N R. What does the S stand for?
Oh, subdivision and approval not required.
Well, they usually refer to it as A and R plans, but.
All right, I'll try and get rid of that S. It's just.
Yeah, right.
Some people call it.
S P O?
Subdivision and approval not required.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, most people refer to it as approval not required, but it doesn't, it's not a big deal. However you want.
Well, I've seen it both, I've seen S's.
And you get ZVA office too and you're, Larry said no.
Those are going to be changed in all, right? All right, motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve with the changes suggested.
Second.
Second by David Jacob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. April twenty-fifth?
Twenty-eighth.
Oh, twenty-fifth, you're right.
Yeah.
Again, this was an exhaustive public hearing for Karen Hunt. That's the primary order, so people want to take a few minutes to try to refresh their memories.
These are the minutes that I did do most of them and then, but I could still have made mistakes, but where I just filled in and revised was from like three A or four new applications around then, I left the room. And so I filled those in, so I'm not sure.
I've already looked, I didn't have any problem except for where, the only problem I had in the last meeting were these minutes and where they were filling the blanks. Because I, so I didn't have a problem with.
No, I thought it was good.
I didn't have a problem with the public hearing.
From memory, you may have remembered more than I have here.
I don't know, it's pretty exhaustive.
No, I think it was good. Did we get that question mark at the, in the last page, page six?
All right, so three A, go down, planning board, Sheena states, summarize the letter from Attorney guilty regarding, I worked left, I thought it was from Larry Graham.
I'm sorry, what page you on?
I'm sorry, page five, five A.
Okay.
It's Mary Graham.
I think it was, yeah. Of course, I don't think guilty.
And I don't think I said that. I said Bryant wants to move forward, doesn't work that way. No, I mean, it just, there's a whole process. So I don't recall saying that because it doesn't reflect the reality.
Bryant wants to make progress on.
Completely, that's all.
You want to say that?
And so, because fall town meeting, those things are out of our control and I don't have any say in any of that stuff. We're not even close to making that kind of assertion.
Yeah. Even if there's a fall town meeting, it's.
I mean, Larry, I believe is not going to be moved. They would already have to get it in, I mean, receive a, a call from this, like, yes. And the other thing on D, on bills payable, Bryant lets the board know they're behind and paying the review consultant.
Mm-hmm.
Not hired.
Should be the board's consultant.
The boards, the planning board review consultant.
Yeah.
Yeah. It gets paid in the next cycle because it doesn't work in the week. And then there's, you still have something on E in parentheses, did you mean to delete that?
Oh, I don't know. Let's see.
Well, I think.
Oh, I think I, it wasn't clear, and so I wanted direction.
I think, Kurt, you did, or we did ask Larry to review the ice cream shop application. Because he did review it.
Yes.
Okay, we'll just take the question.
So put a period there.
Yeah, we'll just leave it like that, okay. You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. All right, with those changes, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. With those changes?
With a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
August twenty-second. With the minutes, this was pretty straightforward. Just please read the carriage pines. As you recall, Rich Williams, Chris Fargus, Fargus showed up. I think also it says here on, on page two, second to last paragraph. I think Cliff kind of spearheaded that, we agreed, but I think he was the first one to mention the.
Oh, that's a blame it on me.
Well, no. It said Bryant would not like to encourage parking along the sides I rode there.
No, that wasn't me. That was kind of in favor of allowing that.
On the sides?
Yeah. And then I thought.
That's why I was going, I'm just trying to.
I thought you did to say that wasn't a good idea.
Where are we?
Second to last paragraph on page two.
Yeah, I can actually recall you saying that, Kurt.
Well, I know I said it, I was, yeah.
I may, I may get these out of context, too, and so someone else may have.
It was generally that way. I was talking about the hammerhead.
Right.
I know you said that because I was all for a little hammerhead. I remember at the, at the other meeting, I didn't really like the idea of people using the little parking lot created as the turnaround. So I was happy to hear someone else, you know, wanted it.
Subsequent to that, we started, from an engineering standpoint, started talking about width of roads.
Right.
And DiGiorgio, is that his name? You know, thought that the roads shouldn't be wide just to accommodate cars parking and just seem to fit the, you know, the field for the.
Then we talked about defined spaces along the road.
Like, yes.
It was used in some other spots up at the beginning of the development.
In the end, it really is the issues raised, not who said them, right?
Yeah.
These are all issues that were brought up and.
Right.
Do you typically, on page three, basically based the second paragraph, should you capitalize town planner?
On the second? I see John Gorman is the.
Chairman, Bryant points out that the town planner.
Page three?
Oh, it's the third.
Three, four, yeah.
Third paragraph.
I'd just like to see that stand out.
Oh, town, oh, you.
So that's cap, so.
Okay.
It's consistent in the planning boards. I don't know.
I'll move to approve the minutes of August twenty-two, two thousand and twelve. With the changes, louder.
On a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lord.
You have to date.
Except for there, there was a missing part, the interview minutes that Debbie will be giving to us and we can just keep those separate from the regular meeting because that was a special meeting before anyway, right? Started at six thirty.
That's pending, that's pending input from the town administrator. The next, you have some bills payable to sign? And you also, I need a motion to, to appoint a second person, right?
Right.
To be able to have a backup to, in case, you know.
Case you were in place, Kevin.
They don't have a hideous accent.
And I immediately thought that possibly, you know, Cliff, I almost drafted it with Cliff's name, but I, as you see, I left it blank because then I realized Cliff isn't around a lot.
I am close.
I'll make a motion that David be the backup. Is that, or Jean, I don't care.
It's good to be there.
Is that all right with you? All right.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to just ruin your chances, though.
No, it's true, I'm in Boston most days and it's hard, it's harder for me, you know, both you are locals, it's harder for me to get here.
I never know where I'm going to be.
She's got my phone.
All right, I have a motion to appoint David to be a backup for signing the payroll.
No, I already do that.
Well, but.
But there are some other issues.
But then Jean, we're putting Jean off the hook, we only need two. We used to need three, where everyone to sign.
Well, now we just need one, but.
One.
It's an alternate.
Just an alternate.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, David.
Congratulations, David.
Am I signing something or?
Yeah, and you can fill in David's name because I didn't know who was going to get to be the alternate.
Make a social business out of it. Not with our town planner, but everybody.
Town planner's too busy.
I saw Ken Wood the other day and he was so happy to see me, I can't, I couldn't believe it.
All right, you have bills payable?
Well, you're the only one who has to sign it now, so I can get you to sign it afterwards. However, I do have one more thing and I, and I forget if I even brought this up with you, but I did speak with Debbie Egan about phone allowance, wireless phone allowance. And she said that that's, that's fine to do when they, they, there's a sliding scale going from twenty-five up to fifty. And, and so I was going to bring it up with the board to see if they would consider allowing me to bill for that on a monthly basis for using my wireless phone. And I do have, I mean, other offices do it, I've seen how much other offices use their phones and what their bill.
Have you ever given us a number? Is twenty-five enough or fifty?
Oh, well.
How do you know?
I didn't know if the board wanted to suggest a number.
I'll suggest twenty-five now and then if you need more.
Okay.
Because isn't cell phone a flat rate?
Because then you'll see how much you use it, that's all. In proportion to what your bill is.
I wouldn't say it's a flat rate because we have a family plan, actually. So it's all lumped in with all these other things, but I've got a data package. I do use my phone a lot, I just wanted to say, for, for work.
Why not? You called me.
It's great for making PDFs, it's, I get my emails, I respond to emails all the time.
Well, that should, but, I mean.
But it's also my personal phone, too.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'd rather start low and then if, you monitor it for a bit and if you need to increase, we'll increase.
Yeah, that's fine. And so, and so I have something here and we'll put twenty-five dollars. And I think what happens is this just stays in the file. I have it addressed to Susan Bailey, so she's aware that the planning board approved this and we'll give her one and keep it in the file and then when you bill, you just say on. I think it has more capabilities.
We won't go there. All right, is that?
Oh, much for that.
Yeah, if it's okay with the town. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what the protocol is for that sort of thing, I mean, how you determine.
Is it okay with the town?
Debbie said it was okay.
Okay.
And 25 is the lowest you can go.
Oh, okay.
And just as a, as a comparison, I know the building inspector gets 50, the wiring inspector and gas get, get 25 each.
All I remember, there was an issue a few years ago about a town official using a cell phone for.
It was supposed to be just for town business.
Right.
So I think that's why they changed it.
And it was a big issue, so I just think we should be a little careful.
That's why I'm starting low, and I just want to keep track of how often you actually use it.
Right.
And then kind of proportionalize it, you know?
I'm wondering if I could do that.
Proportionalize it to your bill, just from the amount of time. I mean, if you find, you know what?
Count how many emails. I get all my emails on it. I get every single town email.
But since you're new, I'd just like you to monitor. I mean, is that all right?
Yeah, again, if this is okay with, with the town administrator, that's.
Well, you know what? I will CC her on this, on this letter, too.
Okay.
Just so that everyone's aware, it's all above board. It's not anything the other departments aren't doing. I don't know how you can judge how much someone needs a phone.
Yeah, I know. No, because it's a.
The way bills are written now.
It doesn't change.
It's really difficult, though.
Right.
Unless you spend all day just going every single phone number, every single minute of data, every single.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to authorize the amount of $25 to be billed monthly by the town planner, Katrina Larry, for compensation toward use of her personal wireless phone for business purposes.
Yeah, pending, pending monitoring, and if it needs to be just.
Second.
Increased, so we could revisit it, okay? Just so you know that in the motion, we will revisit based on your feedback.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. One thing to keep track of, if people would do, Katrina is giving us a, a budget each, each meeting, so you can see what's left in the expense account.
When you read them, yeah.
You can see what's left in the consultants fund. I think it's good to see that.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we have votes down the road, Katrina had mentioned to me, she would like a lateral file, it's about 450 bucks.
Where's the budget? Is it in the packet?
It's the planning board's.
It's D, under D.
And it has the last, last entry is Verizon, 822, 2012. We have 2,000, we start out with 2,970, and we have 2,392, 31.
I do have to warn you, what doesn't show on here is the one I'm going to be having Kurt sign tonight, and it includes, it's a $787 bill for our PO box, and then $650 is, is half of our pictometry payment. They can be split over two years. And $51 in office supplies, which is a box of paper and a two-hole punch.
Didn't we say that the pictometry could come out of the planning board consultants fund?
Didn't.
We went over that. What's the, what's the total that you have for tonight? Because that's going to complete the expenses.
Well, I can rewrite this. The, the total is 787, but I can.
The total is 787 tonight? For everything that you just mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay.
That takes a good chunk out of our nearly budget. So if, if you want me to take the 650 out of the consultant's.
I'll go through that.
I don't, I guess I missed that. I don't remember hearing that.
That sort of makes some sense.
May, would you like to just keep it out of expense, and then we can, I can revisit it with the powers to be about transferring?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me just take it out of expense until we know for sure, and then if we need to.
Then just transfer it later.
Transfer it, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And I'll be adding, actually, I could revise this and have you sign it.
Yep.
Later, because I'll let the 25.
I can sign it tomorrow.
All right.
All right, you have anything else to say?
Just give me one second, just to quickly go through. I think we've got everything.
All right. And a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Jean Katrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.